I'd like to call the meeting to order. I want to remind everybody that a recording device will be in use during this meeting. Let's open the meeting with a budgeting.
That's what the meeting is, the plan, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible.
Public comment for agenda items, rules, rules for public, rules for conduct of public meetings, established by Resolution twenty oh one dash oh eight. The time allotted to each individual making comment shall be three minutes unless otherwise set by the presiding officer. Additional public comment may be granted at the discretion of the presiding officer at the conclusion of the meeting. I will set the timer to three minutes. Five minutes of the previous meeting. Want any questions on the minutes?
Make a motion that we approve the January nineteenth Board of Supervisors AM meeting minutes.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Authorization to pay bills and approve payroll. I have reviewed the bills, bills, and I'll make a motion to authorize the payment of bills and approval of the payroll.
I'll second.
All fair?
Aye.
Okay. Old business, is there any old business? New business, township building, HVAC and duct work repair. Revan.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. In your packet this morning is a proposal prepared by Panoni Associates for engineering work to be performed in advance of the replacement of duct work on the, primarily the police department side of the administration building. I may, may call on Roadmaster Van Lou to fill in some blanks in my summary here. I want to start with, this is not a budgeted expense. The amount of funding available in the capital fund for the project was an estimate for the actual duct work itself, Matt, approximately fifty-three thousand, I believe is what was left.
Yeah, fifty-three or fifty-five.
Alright, and so this is an unanticipated expense, and this is for design work associated with that project.
When, when Panoni provided the estimate for the work, we weren't, we did not know at that time whether it was, had included the, their administration, administrative costs. So that question was posed to him, once we received this estimate, and it was not included as part of the administration cost.
I have a question. The design of HVAC duct work system, I know why we need to do it, I know what the purpose is to accomplish it. Usually that's done by the selected HVAC contractor. I'm unsure what exactly what Panoni's doing, I don't think they're qualified to design HVAC. Qualified to. I'm.
I have been working with a engineer, and I do not recall his name, from Panoni, and, and he does do design work for HVAC.
Why wouldn't we use the ultimate contractor? I know you need them to do the bidding documents.
Right, for the documents.
It's not that big of a job, I mean, I don't think we need them to oversee it either.
Well, you know, I mean, I think there's consensus that them preparing bid specs and managing the bid, I, I strongly think that Panoni should do the work. I don't know that we can in-house prepare, prepare bid specs for this project, and it will be above the bid threshold.
I understand, but I, I know a little bit, and not to be dangerous and possibly incorrect, but, sizing the duct work and placing the duct work and all that stuff. This is, it's highly technical and specialized. Not, not, people think it's random, it's not.
Right, well.
Same problems you have now.
Okay, so if I could just circle back to the project itself. The, the fundamental problem with the HVAC system on the police side of the building is that it is located in the space between the drop ceiling and the drywall ceiling above. And that same area serves as the cold air return. And so when you have duct work that's transporting treated air through an area that is the cold air return, there has been a condensation forming on the duct work. The proposed solution is to replace the, the current distribution system with a series of, of, with a product that is foam insulation itself built into the structure of a duct. I don't know that, that you could just say, okay, just tear out this duct and replace it with an in-kind foam, and it would still have the same capacity, because the diameter of the piping is different.
Goodly, no, you can't, that's right, that's what the, what the HVAC contractor will make calculations to determine, the pipe diameters will change as the run goes on.
The only, the only place that uses this kind of proposed duct work are hospitals. Or, and that's generally not even, you know, usually stainless for any wet exhaust or anything. I just think that it just wasn't installed properly, it wasn't sealed, that's the problem. You don't seal it, it leaks.
Well, that's what's concerning to me, I, I, I manage two office buildings and duct workers in a planet that is the cold air return.
And you have to be, you still have to insulate the term, that's all.
Roof is insulated, but not. I have a problem with condensation, it's up to occasion. Know we need to, I know we need to fix what's there.
I think it should be replaced with metal duct and just have it pressure tested, like according to, you know, standard.
Well, we have metal duct now, right?
Yeah, it's just not sealed properly.
Right, but so ceiling, I, I, you're talking about duck muck? Which I'm assuming was done on this original system. I think it's the humidity that's, the condensate's dripping from it, I think it's still, is it, Matt, is it wrapped right now?
It's wrapped, but it's only wrapped on three sides because the top is not accessible due to it being about two inches from the, from the hard ceiling above it.
And it was never wrapped originally from the in-star, correct?
It, it was wrapped, it's been re-wrapped about five times. My crew has re-wrapped it twice, including myself. And we had a contractor come in, I believe around twenty eighteen or so, and they wrapped it too, and it's still is leaking, it's because it's exposed on the, the top side.
I, I've nev-, I've never seen.
I mean, you can, I mean, you fabricate duct, doesn't matter if it's ten by twenty, or, or, you know, eight by twenty-two. As long as, you can figure any way you want, as long as you have the velocity and the size.
So, so here's the other question, you may know the answer to this. If you only have two inches between the ceiling and the, the top part, the, the top section, if you only have two inches, aren't you going to lose R-value by compressing that insulation in that two-inch spot anyway? And then it kind of defeats the purpose of wrapping the top as well? Because now you've lost your R-value when it compresses the insulation.
It needs to be sealed properly, you can, you can figure the duct.
So, so regardless, I guess, the, the scenario is easy, it's A or B. One, the duct work comes down, it gets re-sealed, the existing or new, gets properly sealed, properly wrapped, re-installed, pressure-tested, re-installed, or the original comes down and the new foam product goes up in its place. The fifty-five thousand, is that just the police section of the building, or is that both?
It's the police section of the building. The township side of the building, the supplied duct work is located above the hard ceiling, it's in the attic, so it does not have a condensation problem.
And then.
We've, we've been looking for a while for a retrofit, and this is the retrofit that was recommended by Panoni and their HVAC engineer. And we also had the manufacturer out here to, to look at, the manufacturer of this product.
So what we're asked to approve is thirty-five hundred dollars for Panoni to design, prepare bidding contracts, and inspect the final?
Twelve grand, it'd be, it'd be twelve thousand dollars for them to provide the, the thirty-five hundred, if, if we want that to.
It's a problem with my fault.
So, so I'm, I guess what it all boils down to is if, I mean, I'm not an advocate of spending that kind of money, but on this flip side, I'm also, this is a can that's been kicked for years. So, so I guess the other question is, are they offering this, this, this foam product? Are they offering any type, type of guarantee, warranty, you know, anything along that nature? That, that, you know, it would be a travesty to install all this duct work and then have the same exact problem, start all over again.
Yeah, I believe they do have, they have a warranty that goes along with it.
Who's they, Panoni or the?
The company, the Cool Duct Company, company.
Whoever installs is going to have, has to warrant their work.
And then we're going to be, coming into summer, is the other issue, and that's when it really starts dripping.
Right.
When, when was their timeline, I didn't get that far into it, that they?
They said, we anticipate having a contract on the agenda for an award on March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, Board of Supervisors meeting. Work would likely begin in May. I, I think, you know, just, the, the, the Budget Committee reviewed proposals, you know, not for their, their merit, but did allocate funds for this retrofit in the, the building. What we failed to anticipate is that there would be bid administrative costs and design costs. Me, I don't think the, the failure to anticipate that expenditure means that we should reexamine the proposed solution. We've gotten this far down the line with a proposal to repair the problem, and we just have an unanticipated expense. I consider that unfortunate, but my recommendation is that we execute this proposal from Panoni.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with the duct work, I know it needs to be done. I've been here for, going on seven years, to know that this has been a problem for as long as I've been here. Where I have the issue is, I, I kind of agree with these guys, is this something that the duct manufacturer could easily say, no, we don't need Panoni, we can design it, we know the load counts, we know everything that we need to know here, the warranty's through us, and, and it's just Panoni does the, the bid specs on it. I, I just think that you're, you're asking an engineer to design something that they're not on the, on the field trained with, whereas the duct company would be, that, that's my only.
And, and I agree that there are likely vendors who are not engineers, who can guide us through the retrofit. The problem is, is I can't make an introduction to an engineer, or to a, to a, an HVAC company that can do the retrofit without first competitively bidding the scope of the project. And no one in-house can write the, the bid specs to get to the point where we have a relationship with an HVAC vendor.
Like, what you're really paying Panoni to do.
Yeah.
Is write it up.
Write, because if you ask the HVAC contractors to bid, they might all come in with different designs, if it's only slightly different. So without a third party, comparing the, the design and bid specs, you can't really judge value of the bids.
What about getting the, the HVAC contractors for the duct work, getting three competitive bids, put it out there that East Brandywine Township is looking for, to redo the duct work on the police administrative side of the building? Get three bids, let Panoni decide which one is going to be more to solve the problem, and then it's, Panoni's only reviewing the, the bids per se, and saying, yes, this will meet your, your specs, and it's not like they're.
How does Panoni compare the bid documents?
By just.
If I may, I, I think Carl's point is well taken. Typically, governments don't bid design-build contracts because you're going to get back different designs, and then you may, and then you can't compare them, you, you can't really pick the lowest responsible bid. The other difficulty is, or I think issue is, in my view, it's better to have an objective person design the system that's not going to benefit from the contract. So you go out on the street, but here's the design, we want you to bid on this design. So there's not some building prejudice from the contractor, for lack of a better term. I, I want to do this because this is what I do. There is a benefit to having a third party, whether it's Panoni or somebody else with expertise in HVAC, to do the design.
I doubt square three definitely. When it was a seal or install probably day one.
Well, the six, the sixty grand, we don't know. Right, and that's also includes removing the current duct work, correct?
Yes.
And the drop ceiling. And the drop ceiling, so.
And, and the sixty grand represents an engineer's estimate of cost. Again, there is no winning better.
I see.
What about, can we have Panoni, if, if we go that route, can we have Panoni do two bid requests? One for properly sealed, galvanized, and duck muck, and reinstall? Either A, using our existing, or B, new? And then the second, using the, the foam product and let the board decide? You know, if, if it comes in at, you know, way over budget, then, then we, we pivot?
That, that would. I, I think that the reason it's an agenda item today is because there's an unanticipated expense. But I, I don't think that the unanticipated expense means that we should return to square one and reconsider the scope of the project. I feel like we've made great progress towards a proposed solution, which is the substitution of that duct work for insulated duct, internally insulated duct. I would be concerned that any further attempt to tear down, re-insulate existing and return could just have the, the condensation return again.
Pressure test it, then you would be able to determine that.
You pressure test the insulation?
Yeah, but they won't be able to properly pressure test without removing all of the insulation that's on there right now.
I thought, I was on the impression back in two thousand and eighteen, when the company from Groomall, what is the company's name? Matson.
Matson, yeah.
They came in to, to seal that and, and re-insulate it. I was on the impression that Butler Balancing was going to be, was hired, not only to balance the system afterward, but to actually pressure test the system prior to them insulating it. That's standard, that's, that's what they do, they've done it from my company many times. You know, they, we have them come in, we install the duct work, we have them come in, they pressure test it. Once they say yes, it's, you, you meet the, the requirements of, of the amount of duct leakage you're, you know, full, then you insulate it. Doesn't matter about the.
Yeah, and that's in new home construction as well, it gets tested in, 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 the inspector typically.
And then you would know, if, if you had them come in right now and say, can you guys do a pressure test on this system, tell us if it's, if there's, what the leakage is? They'll say, they'll be able to, then you can, that's what the problem is. It's not the insulation, it's the, it's the ducts leaking.
So, my understanding, and we could just, I've, I've got a little sketch-up here, is, is that it isn't possible to properly insulate the existing pipe between the, 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 the drywall ceiling and the drop ceiling, because there's not enough space. There is not concern that, that air is leaking from this area. It's that the insulation around it is allowing infiltration into it, and, and the condensation forms and then drips down. So.
For the return.
No, the, the, there is no return piping. The gap is the return.
Yeah, correct, so if you have your girders, you're steel, and you have your, your, your duct work at the top here, and you've ruined the signal that's right, there's a reconfiguration. Okay. Same as ground.
And, and to be clear, the proposed solution is a product that itself is internally insulated, and it will fit in that space. And there's, there's no.
Seven times more than we're traditional. That's what I'm saying, I just think if the product is crazy, overkill, but for this.
Well, so here's the, the crux of it. This has been a problem for seven years, and it hasn't gotten addressed. It needs to get addressed, one way or the other. So I think, like I said, and we've talked about this for, 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 I mean, at least every year, and I, and I don't even want to look over at chief right now, because I know I'm getting a death scare, it needs to be addressed.
I agree, it needs to be addressed, I'm, I'm, I raised a question, because as an amateur compared to you two, of others. I, I, I assume the HVAC company or the company would do the design work.
And if the regulatory environment in Pennsylvania allowed me to pick up the phone and choose a vendor who I know and trust, and said, come out here and do this, I would do that. Unfortunately, any project that exceeds twenty-two thousand dollars must be competitively bid. And in order to competitively bid it, I need a person who can adequately describe the scope of work to write up the bid documents. And that's what I need to engage Panoni to do.
And I think we need to be perfectly clear with Panoni, this is a, a, a non-disclosure. It has to be done right, and we can't be dealing with this anymore. And, you know, there's things that Panoni can, can, can look at and quickly give us their scenario. This is not one of them, we need this addressed.
Are we comfortable enough knowing that it needs to be addressed?
Yeah.
Now?
I am.
To move this on?
I am. Well, I'll make a motion for Matt to continue with Panoni and the HVAC and duct work repair, for the purpose of getting a bid dock spelled out so that we can submit it online for, for comparable bids.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And didn't mean to prolong the discussion, but I think that does bring up a point that I think the three of us were under the impression, I know it needed to be competitive, that I know it's foul of bid, the bid, the bid procedures, but I never, I never anticipated that Panoni would still have to write the bid documents that they would be. I mean, you can write a bid, do your own design, using these specifications. That, that's what threw me for a loop, so I apologize for putting everybody through that.
I appreciate the board's stewardship of taxpayer money. My frustration is that when we got to the point where we had a proposed solution, and we got to the point where we budgeted for that proposed solution, we failed to anticipate soft costs associated with implementing that solution.
I understand, I understand, but I think all of us assumed that soft costs would be minimal, and that it turned out not to be a good assumption on our part, so maybe, maybe we should have been involved a little earlier, so that's, that's on us. Anyway, Jason said he's going to go over and check.
I'll get up, I haven't taken a look at it yet.
Alright, thank you.
Okay. New business, six B, twenty twenty-three proposal for revision of Act five thirty-seven plan. Revan.
Yeah, thank you. This morning, we're also joined, joined by municipal authority sewer engineer Joe Baldass. And in your packet is a proposal, prepared by Joe for a project we've been working on for some years. Last night at the planning commission, I gave a brief summary of, of how we got to this point. The, the township began writing a grant, began writing a Act five thirty-seven plan some years ago, and we received a grant to pay a significant portion of those costs. That grant has since expired. In about April of twenty twenty-one, the project advanced to the state where it was made available for public comment. After receiving public comment, the project was put on hold while, or while discussions with those making comments could be held. We're now able to proceed, and we have a plan that was last updated in April of twenty twenty-one. And what's in your packet is a proposal from Hydroterra Professionals for a scope and an estimated cost of bringing the plan up to date so that it can be adopted by this board. I will point out that the, the Act five thirty-seven plan is mentioned in our newly adopted comprehensive plan as a goal to be adopted. And with that, Joe, is there anything you would like to add to my summary?
That Maple View and Brandywine Wall? And that's what held up, completing the five thirty-seven original? My understanding was even more serious than that, they threatened litigation?
Yeah, if I may, I, I think, yeah, they, they did threaten litigation, and it was resolved by a settlement agreement, or the agreement is that they would withdraw their comments.
But I'm, I'm, I'm going to circle route, because this is an unbudgeted expense that was out of our control.
To some extent, that's correct. It was delayed by something that was out of our, out of the township's control and in the municipal block.
We have to update it. Five thirty-seven, now that all the stuff has been settled.
Well, I, I would add that there's been considerable investment in, in, in time and effort to get to the point where we have an outdated draft at this juncture. And the, the remaining scope of work, while it is required because things have changed in the last two years, I think is a, there's a drop in the bucket relative to the total plan costs. And I think we should advance the plan to the finish line.
President, seven, a question.
I'll make a motion that we accept the Hydroterra proposal to update Township's Act five thirty-seven plan.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Joe.
Yep. Next is six C, the twenty twenty-three Cedarville Road project proposal.
I'm going to ask for some.
Um, I'm going to ask for some money too, but, uh, this is budgeted, this is budgeted money. So. Um, Cedarville Engineer has provided a proposal for, um, administering and bid specifications for the twenty twenty-three road project. Um, this includes the overlay, repairs and overlay to Kristen Circle, Keller Way, School Lane, uh, La Vida Via and, uh, Baton Drive. And the second portion is the, uh, uh, fog seal or the, uh, chip, chip seal of, uh, Timber Pass and, uh, Cumberland Ridge Development, which is located off of, uh, Buck Road and also, uh, Rock Raymond Road. Uh, there will be two, uh.
Matt, sorry, real quick.
Sure.
Chip seal on Rock Raymond too?
No, not on Rock Raymond. The Cumberland Ridge Development, which is located off of Buck Road and off of, uh, Rock Raymond.
I was just thinking, that's like a sliding.
That's State Road also.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so they will be providing two separate bid documents. Uh, the reason being is most of your asphalt companies do not do chip seal. Chip seal is more of a specialized, um, so a company that does do chip seal can also, uh, bid on the asphalt if they wanted to. But, uh, that's why they're providing two separate documents. Uh, we feel we can get a better price from a company that just does chip seal rather than asphalt company having to subcontract that, that part out. Uh, so the, the cost of the, the proposal cost is, uh, ten thousand eight hundred dollars. And, uh, that's pretty much in line with the previous years for, for those costs.
That comes out of your capital budget, right, in the road?
Correct. Uh, yes, that comes out of capital.
You included this in, in the, in the toll or your, your estimated toll.
Correct.
So this is not like.
The last two, which was unbudgeted.
Correct. Just asking, uh, respectfully ask permission to, um, sign this contract with Cedarville Engineer.
I don't want any questions. I'll make a motion that we accept the twenty twenty-three Cedarville Road, uh, proposal to administer the twenty twenty-three paving project.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the Bank of East Brandywine Taxpayers is now closed.
Maybe not. Okay, thank you. All right. And now, um, six D, Bonsville Mill Garden Project Trail Completion. See, it's not closed yet. Contractor approval.
So, um, to finish Phase Two work of the, um, Big Garden Project at the Bonsville Mill, uh, we need to, um, compact the trails and put finishing material on the trails. Um, there's a dolomite screening material that was selected, uh, from Glasgow that has the right color that David Culp would like to see on the trails. Um, and the existing, uh, stone of the trails needs to be compacted as well. Uh, Sandy, uh, handled the bidding on this and, um, had the, um, prospective, um, vendors come out and visit the site, walk the trails, understand the scope of the work. Um, basically they're going to roll the trails and if necessary, fill, um, low spots with, um, additional stone and roll the trails so that they're flat and then, um, purchase and transport the screening material from Glasgow Quarry in, uh, King of Prussia, uh, for installation and rolling with the ultimate goal of having, uh, ADA rated, uh, trails in the garden. It should be noted that, um, we would have had to purchase the material and transport the, the screening material from Glasgow regardless of this additional rolling work. So with that in mind.
Why would you have to, why would you have to purchase it from Glasgow?
Because that is the quarry that has the color material that David Culp would like to see.
The quarry here in Quarry Road doesn't have.
Yes. Hanson, where we typically go for the material, um, materials does not have the dolomite. The dolomite has a nice buff color.
Tell me, I'd like the trails to be the limestone chips, which is dolomite.
Well, that, that's what it's going to be. Yeah. Um, so, um, Sandy had, um, Pickering Valley Landscaping come out, uh, Distinctive Outdoor Spaces come out and Highland Orchards come out. And we, we obtained free bids. Um, Pickering Valley are coming in at eleven thousand, uh, three hundred and twenty-five dollars. Uh, Distinctive Outdoor Spaces at twenty-two thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars and Highland Orchards, Orchards coming in at thirteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Now, uh, Pickering Valley is the low bidder. That's, that's the vendor that, uh, that Sandy prefers. Um, and, um, what we're asking is that you approve, um, uh, having them come out with a contract for ten thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars with potential for, um, supplying the stone that's needed to make the trails flat, up to twelve hundred more dollars. That's what brings it to eleven thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars.
But that's only going to be spent if the lower areas take more than anticipated.
Right. So, so it's, it's conceivable that on the low end, the cost would be ten thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars, but it could be up to twelve hundred more for the supply of, uh, stone.
Who would decide if it needed more stone? The, the, the Bonsville Mill or, or the contractor?
Uh, the contractor, but, but, uh, we will have, uh, Bonsville Mill personnel there as well. The goal is basically the, the trails have to be flat.
Right.
Um, so whatever's needed to, to make the trails flat prior to the installation of the, the, the finishing screening material.
Um, technical question. Is the, uh, the two A modified going to be installed over organic material?
No, there, 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 there's, there's an existing trail there that, that had as a sub base and two B and two B modified stone. It has just not been formally compacted. So they're going to have to roll this material. It may compact unevenly, which is why you may need to bring in some additional stone.
Not because of spongy organic?
No, it's not. No, no. There's an excellent foundation, uh, trapezoidal shape, you know, wide at the base all the way up to the trail with the top.
And, and real quick, I, this may not obviously, um, it's just food for thought if, if we have any other projects or if there's areas where we can use this, but you can get that recycled asphalt, um, for free from Pendot. When they mill it up, um, they'll, they're looking to get rid of it. And so they, they usually just dump it at landfills. But it's, it's a recycled asphalt that can be compacted as well and it's free. And they'll, they'll, they'll do tractor trailers of it. I'm just throwing that out there to food the thought.
Okay. Well, at this point, I don't think we can go that way.
Can you use that in a repair of, of, of Priscian's though?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure. It's, I would think it's not.
So it, I guess that if we're looking for asphalt surfaces in, in the park at some point, we can certainly consider that. Um, so with regard to funding this, uh, this, this is part of the garden project, but, uh, we don't have any funds left in the Phase Two Grant reimbursable budget. Um, so, um, the Bonsville Mill Park Committee is recommending that we spend, that we fund it with eighty-nine hundred dollars from the East Brandywine Foundation, unencumbered funds earmarked for, um, Bonsville Mill Park. And that the balance be funded from our capital fund budget, uh, this year. Or, you know, so it's not an additional expense. We would fund it from our capital fund budget this year with eighty-nine hundred dollars coming from East Brandywine Foundation, anticipating that the foundation would approve that.
So you want to pay the bulk of this not out of your capital funds that have been allocated?
Right.
But you're going to have to make a request to the foundation, are we?
Correct.
Although we're part of the foundation, we, uh, that is a foundation.
Right. I wouldn't expect you to approve that portion of it, but, uh, that is the intent and, uh, so would the expectation.
Besides, they don't want to, uh, spend the eighty-nine hundred dollars of unencumbered, uh, funds for that project, project. Then your only other choice is to come back to the township to amend your capital project amount or to take it out of your capital project amount. And as I recall.
Right.
The capital project, here's a lump sum of money. You spend it, throw away. I know it wasn't everything you asked.
Well, with, with, with guidance. I mean, for example, your, your, your desire to close up the outside of the, of the buildings, that is, that is a priority, but, but, uh, generally speaking, uh, you give us, uh, some credence there. Yeah.
So, this really is informational right now. Or are we to approve the contract and then now so that then you figure out how to get the funding?
We, we'd like to approve the contract now because we, we want to get the trails finished in time for the plantings to go in later this spring. And.
When's the next town, uh? By me? I can't hear you.
March.
March.
March. And how long is the contract good for? Did you say three hours?
Um, frankly, I don't recall that detail.
Almost thirty days. This one's sixty days.
Cause I guess what, where I'm going with this is, are they going to honor their price?
Their contract is good until May thirty-first.
Okay.
Okay. Um, is it possible you might have a special foundation meeting?
I'm fine with it and I'm sure the board is fine with it, but we also have Becky as well and, um.
Mr. Burton?
Bud Burton, yeah.
Yeah. Well, what, what you mean as far as setting up a foundation meeting?
No, I'm saying I'm fine with a special meeting. I'm sure the board is. It's, it, we would have to reach out to Becky and Bud.
Okay.
Well, let's approve the contract first and, and then we can even set up. Just one other, one other thing real quick before we, um, in, in terms of getting to and fro from doing the other plantings, are you using that path to drive the equipment on anyway?
We will be, yeah.
Okay. Where, where I'm going with this is, are we, I just want to make sure we're not putting the cart before the horse. If we go ahead and flatten that out and then we're digging into it, turning and going off the path to do dirt work, all of a sudden then it has to be redone again.
Well, the, the trees have all been installed. I, I mean, Sandy can speak to the kind of plants that are going in.
Um, and the only thing you could do with that scenario, which would be a pain in the neck, but it can be done, is to get those rubber mats and put them, you know, just maybe get one and have it on, on hand so that when you're turning off of that path, you're not tearing it all up. That's all. I'm, I'm just thinking it's four sheets of concrete.
Well, I'm thinking in big picture, one of timeline wise, do you want to move the trail finishing until after the plant installation?
Yeah. I, like I said, I don't have a problem with it, but I, I just wanted to, you know, stress, we need to make sure that we're, we're not.
I, I, I guess it's realized that there will be some maintenance required.
And I'm sure it has a, uh, it has a benefit for walking purposes obviously as well. So, you know.
Yeah. So, uh, I'd like to get, um, the contract approved or, or the, or the approval to start work with this low bidder. And, um, we can work out the details of, of the funding, uh, once we meet with the, uh, the foundation board.
Do you have any more questions on this? I'll make a motion that we, I make a motion that we approve, approve the Bonsville Mill Garden Project Trail Completion and by awarding the contract to, uh, Pickering Valley Landscaping.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Um, real quick, totally unrelated, but on the side of, I think it's building A, the Tyvek's coming off now. Fire was exposed again. At the very least, maybe we should get some more Tyvek up there. Um.
Uh, we're putting siding up.
Okay.
It's, it's, that's on schedule for this year. We're, we're, we're working on the outside of the buildings. We'll be doing some interior work as well, but we're working primarily on the outside of the buildings and, and getting them closed up as requested.
Aye.
I'm going to stay up here in case Luke wants me to speak to the next item.
Okay. Next item is, uh, six E, request for extension of Phase Two County Grant Bonsville Mill Park Improvements.
Uh, yeah, I'd, it, um, originally indicated that, that HUD Volts, the, the grant administrator would make comments on this. Um, that, so I, I, I believe Jim has stayed at the lectern to be able to make comment on that. I think this is a pretty straightforward request for an extension of the timeline for, uh, Phases Two, Three and Four of the Bonsville Mill Improvement Project. Um, uh, asking the board permission or, or, uh, uh, asking the board to authorize staff to, to, to have the chairman execute the letter and forward it on to the grant administrator. Any, any further comment, Jim, that I left out of my summary?
Well, I can provide some detail there, I guess. Um, the, the grants from the county, both the county and the state came in two rounds. Uh, the first round of grants, which covers the Phase One and Two work in the gardens, was awarded in twenty nineteen, April twenty nineteen. That's a three-year grant, uh, and we've had to extend that grant, uh, by six month periods. We, we've done that twice. Uh, this would be the third extension, uh, in which, which is a little bit more administrative on the county and they will actually have to go to the, um, the county commissioners for this. Um, but the, the reason being that, uh, first, um, the county grant was awarded in, in April of twenty nineteen. The matching grant from the state didn't come until the very end of the year. So we were nine months behind schedule, uh, already. And then we had, um, various issues such as COVID inflating bid prices and, um, an adjustment to our approach to do the work with, using, um, significant amount of volunteer hours and, uh, the hurricane, uh, and, and the bridge damage and the pair. So we've had various reasonable, um, reasons, uh, for, uh, the delay in, in the work. And the county is understanding of that and has provided us extensions in the past. So, um, the, the last extension deadline was in April of, um, of this year. And we don't think that we can finish the, um, the trail work, which is the last part of the Phase Two work, and get all of the, the grant administrative stuff done before the deadline. So that's the reason for the six months extension, uh, on, um, the, the round one grant. Additionally, um, our second round grant from the county, um, expires in April. And, um, that covers Phases Two and Three of the, uh, the garden project. Phase Three being the plants installation, which we've already started on, and, uh, Phase Four being the parking lot. And, um, we expect we'll have both those phases done before the end of this year. Um, but we're going to need an extension from the county for that as well. And I, I believe that's, I'm not sure if that's included comprehensively in, in HUD's request or if they're two, two separate, um, requests. I guess that's a question for you, Luke. Did HUD combine, uh, these requests of the round one and, uh, round two grant extensions?
I, I am a little confused by the wording in the draft letter. Um, the, the, you're correct in that there are two rounds of grants, both from the state and from the county. However, the general split is Phases One and Two are in one set and Phases Three and Four are in another.
Right.
So to the extent that the memo line references Phases One or Two, Three and Four, it leads to me to believe that this letter's intent is extend. Four, it leads to me to believe that this letter's intent is extensions for both sets of grants.
That is the intent, yes.
Yes. Did I answer your question, Jim?
Yes.
Okay, and I cut off Lisa, what were you going to say?
I was just gonna say to.
Okay, well, that makes sense because the one request requires the county administrators to go through the county commissioner, so it's a little bit more bureaucratic. The, the second request for the round two extension can be done within the parks department. That's a routine six-months extension. And I'll, I'll add to that, this whole discussion, that the state grants are four-year grants, so we haven't gotten into the need to request extensions from the state for this work.
All right, subdivision and zoning applications, I believe there's one right now that.
I, I'm sorry, was there a, an action, a motion to, to authorize staff to forward this letter on?
We signed the letters already.
It's a formality.
I'd like to make a motion to request an extension to Phase Two County Grant for Bonsville Mill Park Improvements. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And a motion to approve the round one grant extension.
Some move. Some move.
Thank you.
Subdivision and zoning applications, none before us right now. Ordinance and resolutions of consideration, eight A, is review of landscaping requirements for new developments. Present.
Yeah, so included in your packet is a paperclip set of records that are related to the work of the Planning Commission in developing a recommendation to you to amend landscape requirements for new developments. I'm asking you to take that paperclip section and set it aside because we have a much newer piece of information, and that is.
Literally, the ink is still dry.
Yeah, we, we, and that is this record, which has the soft staple at the top left. So the staff in preparing the packet produced the same materials that were in the Planning Commission's meeting last night, but during the Planning Commission's meeting, the, the recommendation to the Board of Supervisors was further, further refined and is now before you this morning. So I'm, I'm gonna start with first a statement as to what the, what the, what the intent of the, of the Planning Commission and prior to that ordinance task force was in, in proposing a revision. And that is that it has been the experience of land development over the last few applications that the developers have struggled to find enough room on the, on their plans to, to put in all the required planting. The proposed change to make the planting, the total landscaping requirements more in line with the space that's available in a typical development is to substitute one of the criteria that determines the number of plants. Instead of the gross building area, it would be that building's footprint. So it has the effect of removing the square footage of things on the second floor and finished areas and basements and the like. In order to do so, we must first create a definition, and that's what appears at the top. There is a new definition for chapter three hundred, section seventeen, that defines ground floor area. Another objective of the Planning Commission was to produce a standardized list of plants that were non-invasive and hardy enough and appropriate to be used in land development. And the idea was to adopt that and amend that periodically by resolution so that the frequent amendments to the species acceptable in land development can be done without needing to go through the, the municipality's planning codes hoops to amend a land development ordinance. I will say in your material in front of you this morning, there is no list of species that will be coming at a later date. But I draw your attention to chapter three ninety-nine seventy-eight, the revision there C is a reference to how a planning list would be established and amended by the Board of Supervisors. And then lastly, by way of an ordinance change, on page three of your packet, there's a table one, and this was amended in the meeting last night. It clarifies that the, the second column, which had been labeled shrubs, would now be deciduous shrubs. It adds a new column of a different type of planting called understory trees, and it amends what was previously the fourth column, but is now the fifth column, which was also labeled shrubs, as evergreen shrubs. And for each of those types of planting, there is now a number populated in the table as recommended by the Planning Commission. I, I will say that the Planning Commission and the team that was working on a landscape ordinance had done substantially more work with additional recommendations to be considered, among them including screening of particular components such as loading docks in land development. I, I think as a compromise to expedite adoption of an amendment in anticipation of new land development applications, this was made as simple as possible, but deliberation continues at the level of the Planning Commission. So the, the action item today, if it's the board's inclination, would be to direct the township solicitor to put the draft that's in front of you into the form of an ordinance, and then once complete, directing staff to forward that ordinance to Chester County for Act two forty-seven review. And with that, the solicitor and the chairman of the Planning Commission are present, as well as myself, for any questions.
I was there last night, so I, I heard.
I'll just say that this goes back to first being discussed in May twenty, twenty twenty two by the ordinance task force, and within five minutes, it was unanimous to change from building gross square footage to footprint square footage. As far as refining the definitions of the types of plants, plants, I think that was a good exercise last night that came to the table. Our current board didn't seem to be lacking, actually, in that area. Goes to the point that, that, again, our landscaping ordinance was virtually impossible. Hopefully now there'll be more judicious in what we want our developers to do. The number of planning, plantings we have, something we'll just have to see how it works out, that might be revised late, later, but that was consensus last night by people to know more about. I do. And finally, we eliminated about four pages of ordinance. I think our ordinance is a little more simpler to understand. Higher's passage of this, and I hope we can move it along and. So therefore, I'll, I'll propose a motion to approve that new landscaping ordinance requirements for new developments.
I'll second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any public comment on non-agenda items? Dismissed. By me?
I hope that Tony Phil saw a shadow, six more weeks.
Okay. Uh, notices. There was an executive session was held on Thursday, January twenty-sixth to discuss personnel matters. The move. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.